Here.
Mr. Conestella?
Here. We have an approval in minutes, please.
One second.
All the way.
Aye.
Any correspondence, Ms. Sims?
Thank you, Mr. President. We did receive one piece of correspondence today from the township code enforcement. We now have the official certificate of occupancy for the high school entrance.
By far, one of the borrowers' processes we've been about. Okay, so let's go move on to our presentations. The first presentation we're gonna have tonight is with Mr. Capella with the hit by annual report.
Part of the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights is that twice a year, we have to report and provide board, the public with information regarding our initiatives as well as information regarding investigations and incidents of HIB. Ian, am I getting... You up? I'm tripping or something. So we conducted it all. I'm the Anti-Bullying Coordinator. We do have anti-bullying specialists that are designated at each school. Either student assistants. Mrs. Cassily is at the high school as the student assistance coordinator. And our school councilor serves as an anti-bullying specialist at John Walker Middle School, as well as each elementary school. When we conduct an investigation, we have to determine if it's an HIB harassment intimidation, bullying, or incident. For us to consider it HIB, it has to meet the following criteria. Any gesture, written, verbal, physical act, or any electronic communication. Single incident or a series of incidents, right? It has to be motivated by an actual or perceived characteristic. State of New Jersey has designated, has provided a list of what is considered protected characteristics. It also could be any other distinguishing characteristic. Has to take place on school property, a school-sponsored function, on the school bus, or any off-school grounds. It can be off-school grounds. However, for it to be considered HIB, it has to disrupt or interfere with the operation of the school or the rights of the students. Third criteria, it has to have some type of impact on the student. Physical, emotional harm, fear of putting in physical, emotional harm, insulting the domain, or creates a hostile educational environment where the student doesn't feel comfortable going to the class. Maybe the student wants to stay in the nurse's office and doesn't want to go to the classroom, or the student, the parents call first thing in the morning, my son or daughter does not want to come to school. Here are the protected characteristics. As per the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights. See the bottom right-hand corner, any other distinguishing characteristic. Here are some examples of what could be considered any other distinguishing characteristic. If something, if we're dealing with a situation, we cannot identify a distinguishing characteristic, it can either be considered a non-HIB event, or it still could be inappropriate behavior, and that could fall under our code of conduct. It could be code of conduct violation. As I said, I'm the Anti-Bullying Coordinator. Here are anti-bullying specialists who do, who conduct the investigations. Issued by annual report. So, I apologize. So we have to do it twice a year. This is for January to June 2017. As a district, as a whole, we conducted 59 investigations. As you can see, the high school had 16. Well, as you can see, middle school had 15, four at Radcliffe, Spring Garden, and Yanacoy, four Tina Lincoln, and two at Washington. At the elementary level. At the elementary level, we broke it down. As you can see, Lincoln had 14. However, in our investigations, zero of them were considered HIB. Radcliffe, you had four investigations, four incidents of HIB. At Spring Garden, you had one incident of HIB in four investigations. Washington, one of the two were considered HIB, confirmed HIBs. Right, Yanacoy, out of the four, three were considered HIB. Now, even though we had nine cases that were confirmed HIB, in each investigation, there could be multiple reasons, protected characteristics that were violated. So as you can see here, here's the breakdown of the, how is the student targeted? What was the motivated, what motivated the incident? As you can see in the bottom segment of them, there were seven cases, there were other distinguishing characteristics, it was the motivating characteristic. At the high school level, we had six HIBs out of 16. At John Walker, we had three cases of HIB out of 15. Out of the nine cases here, here how the students were targeted. Two based upon race, ancestry, nation of origin, of course, sexual orientation. Disability was two, and other distinguishing characteristics was four. What we do as a district, there's many things that we do as a district, however, I'm here just to provide a snapshot. From January to June, we conducted, I conducted seven new staff trainings. Met with the anti-bullying specialist. I'm also a member of the online Anti-Bullying Coordinator Association, where they disseminate information online. One of the things we do as a district, and then we have a Twitter account. We have Instagram, constantly providing praise to staff, students, who are conducting accomplishments. It's not just about the behavior, but for us, it's creating a sense of community and pride, that if we build and educate our students and build character, reduce the incidents of HIB. Anti-bullying specialists do speak at faculty meetings. Council Department, we had a newsletter, we provide information to parents. There is a link on our district website that provides parents, staff with information regarding all of our HIB information. We conducted an affirmative action training last year. It's not just about educating students, but educating staff as well. Individually, how do we work with not only just, in each incident, it's not just an alleged aggressor, but we're working with the alleged aggressor and the victim. We want to be able to prevent it, we want to be able to remediate the situation. So here's a snapshot of some of the discipline measures that we conducted from last June, January to June. We have support services, depending upon the situation, there could be different assignments, so we can make the students could learn from their situation. Panel conferences, schedule changes, locker seat changes, monitoring, informing staff that something's going on, please be mindful. Referring to different community providers. There could be financial retribution, it could also be contact with another police department. Classroom level, elementary level, all the levels, providing classroom lesson that's infused into the curriculum. I know the, also at the elementary level, they have the LEAD program that's conducted through the local police department. At the John Walker Middle School, we have it embedded in our, in our school day, twice a month. We have our advisory period, which is, we worked on, we did have an advisory period today. Different theme days, radar recognition is initiative which was started last year at the middle school and the high school to recognize students who go above and beyond in displaying positive characteristics. We had a mentoring program, K-12 program, shovel out seniors. Once again, it's about building community, building a bond, build a sense of pride within our community. The municipal alliance does sponsor a lot of our programming. The athletic department, it's embedded in speaking to Mr. Paolo, it's a requirement, part of the Nuthley Athletics to conduct community service. And last year, we had, the bunny patches were donated. This week, this week, I'm sorry, beginning of October this year, we had the weaker respect, which is another initiative that's required as per the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights. Some initiative, we had a blue shirt day, announcements, media specials were conducting displays. The elementary level, they had different lessons for, they were age appropriate. Once again, at the middle school, we conducted an advisory lesson, you could see the displays in the hallway, as well as the banners soon as you walk into the building. Then at the high school, they had radar recognition, and they were doing, they had announcements throughout the day regarding character-building quotes. One of the things that we do every year, it's required that we provide data to the state of New Jersey Department of Ed, which was submitted in July. Hopefully, probably in December, we'll be receiving grades. We have to conduct a self-assessment at the end of the school year, and we hope to be receiving those grades in December, which then we are required to post on the district website, and each school's website. And those grades will also be found in the HIB link. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Capella. Okay, next up, we're gonna bring up Mr. Riley for the UN tapestry presentation.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having me back. I'm here to present to the board tonight a unique opportunity in which our students participated in, under the direction of our art teachers. Our students were invited to the United Nations to present a piece sawdust carpet during, as part of the International Day of Peace last month. So I have a couple of, a couple of pictures of the work. And if some of you might remember, in the spring of the 2015-16 school year, Nutley actually hosted, and we shut down Franklin Avenue here in front of the middle school, and we hosted students from Honduras and, you know, did our work with them again, where we created one of these piece sawdust tapestries right here on Franklin Avenue. So this was a follow-up to that, to commemorate the Day of Peace. So these are our students at the pavilion at the UN.
On October 23rd, at the invitation of the permanent representative of Honduras to the United Nations, students from Nutley High School, working virtually with students from Honduras, created a sawdust tapestry in celebration of UN Day. The project, organized by Carol Pobens of UPF USA and Mario Salinas of UPF Honduras, was inspired by the Honduran tradition of creating sawdust carpets to adorn the streets during religious processions. Using cell phones and computers, students at the Nutley High School Art Department had worked together with Honduran students to come up with a final design. On the day, which also marked the 73rd anniversary of the UN, students worked from early morning to lay out the design, and using dyed sawdust and other materials, created a beautiful image portraying a worldwide hope for peace. Throughout the day, pastors by stopped to view the project, take photos, and to write messages of peace on a poster that students had set up. As Mario Salinas remarked, this has been an opportunity for students to create goodness together.
So again, this is just a unique opportunity in which our students were able to participate. And we had a time-lapse video, quick 30 seconds of the work throughout the day. The actual work took a full eight hours, right? But everything that you see them putting down is sawdust that's dyed. And again, the, the design and the layout was a collaborative effort between our students and students from Honduras that was done using online means, Google, Google Share and whatnot. So it's a really great opportunity, and I'd like to have the opportunity to bring up our art teachers. John, can you just grab the lights? I'd like to introduce our art teachers, who are gonna bring up the students and present some certificates. So Mrs. La Pastado and her student teacher. We have Mrs. Pobens here tonight, Mrs. Melkion, and Ms. Manley.
I want to introduce and thank you, Carol Pobens from the University Peace Federation, and my amazing colleagues, Angela Melkion here, Jessica Manley, and my student teacher, Kathryn Scher. They really made this day happen. I do want to say, of course, thanks to our amazing students that are here, who worked from September to October 23rd, not including the physical construction, actually took 36 hours. The day of was nine hours. So it was really a long project. But most of all, I want to also thank the Nutley Board of Ed and James Riley, Fine Performing Arts, who tolerates all of our crazy learning adventures. But this was really an amazing learning opportunity for students. It was a real-world experience. There's international collaboration, we had cultural language diversities and experiences. We also had proposals, rejections, more proposals. And I do remember a quote that someone gave during our proposals, when our UN, our Honduras artists were declining all their visas, and we had to pull this thing together ourselves. So it was a little scary. We also had rejections and rejections. And this quote showed up through Nutley High School and on my desk by Winston Churchill. And it said, "Success is not final. Failure is not fatal. It's the courage to continue that counts." And this is what kind of made us pick it up and get through this. It was an amazing opportunity, and like I said, it was really a real-world experience. Now, the UN and the Universal Peace Federation would like to personally thank and call up and introduce the artists to you. Arise, Saint Alma. Barbara Benda. Cyril Denly. Aaron Hamlin.
Almost there.
He missed the buzzer, his dad drove him all the way in.
Jaleen Giril. Michael Alvarez. Samantha Carrera. Tatiana Negron. For a language translation, thank you. Jugal Pate. Scott Duffley. Patricia Patolino. Bishop Brown. And we have Nicole Tanner. I want to truly thank all these artists. It was an amazing life skills, wasn't it? It'd be great. And we had an amazing opportunity.
Thank you.
You guys want to do a show?
For all our parents who want to take pictures, this is your chance. Come on down.
Aisling, can you see us?
Scooch over.
And Aisling.
Aisling Scarpelli, sorry.
All right, we got your parents? Look at your parents. Smile at your parents. Scan right, then scan left, scan every parent. We will, I was gonna say. Now, look at this, this age, yeah? Twice for a hug. Good, and one more. No, I can't get you more. There we go. One. Dr. Alex Pooch. There you go. One, two, three. No. There we go. Look at this, five, four, two, three. Congratulations. Next up on the agenda, I know you're in a hurry to go and do your homework, but this is kind of a cool thing. Next up on the agenda, our old TMBster is gonna be talking to a little bit about a project he's been working on, seems like forever. Really interesting, really exciting. I don't want to steal any pleasure by even calling it anything. So it is the Online Document Archive. Thank you.
So, a few of you, if you're pulling up minutes for the agenda, and I may have actually noticed some of this last night. So, how it works like, back in 1998, when it first got set up, looked well like that. It's gotten a little fancier since then. Back in 2002, there was a request from the board at the time, how many of you remember Joe Plaid? He put a specific request, and we put up on that site, schedule for our meetings, agendas for our meetings, minutes of the meetings, and you just recorded them, which we've been doing ever since. We have had since then, all of the minutes and agendas since 2002 posted up on the existing site. Well, and that was what the site looked like back then, having added very, very basic setups. The very first agenda, the very first minutes I posted, very first special notice that were posted for the following office meeting. In 2010, set up a new website. That website had dedicated meeting section, policy book was up there, budgets were up there, had videos of the meetings posted directly on the website. Couple of years ago, in 2015, set up YouTube channel, has all of these meetings, as well as them going up on Channel 77. And then this new one set up today. The one set up today, in addition to all of that, in addition to having current ones back to 2002, the last 15 years, also has, back to the 1900s, my show went through 1909, which was the township of Franklin. So Nutley didn't actually, wasn't called Nutley until late 2002, and the school district itself changed the name. 1966 through today continues. The last 50 years of board records are now up there. Also, the last 30 years, butts. The earliest one that's up there, notice Franklin Township, held on Park Schoolhouse. Some of you may now know the Park Schoolhouse is the current high school, although the park that was being used for this has since been knocked down and replaced with what is the gym in the October. That's the oldest one that's up there continuously, June 27th, 1966. Every meeting from that meeting till today, till tonight, is now up there on that site. Many of you will recognize people who were there at that meeting. Definitely, I'll start all over though.
Charlie.
It's a real shame he's not here. Recognize most of them. He's in most of them, actually.
1900.
The last 30 years of approved budgets, both the ones that are voted on here at the table, and what was published in the papers. We've learned of this from this, of course, that newsprint doesn't always age as well as other kinds of paper. Some of the newsprints got a little hard to retain. So are the mimeographs that slipped in some of these documents over time, per bling, over decades, doesn't last well. Mixed in with it is also stuff like this. Annual reports for the, for the district, this is 1904. That's what the Park School, what is the high school looked like back then. Mid-'50s, and this building was still the high school, which before it got switched over. It's across the street, it's currently the high school. Notice the junior high school sign? The same letters today, but we have to flip out four of them. Yanacoy, we're talking about adding an addition to it now. That's before the first set of additions were added to it. And it was originally built in the early 1900s. Kindergarten classes.
Euro.
They're trying to suit the Euro now. Apparently that then desks were a short supply. And all of the various buildings that we've had over the years. You'll recognize some of these as buildings we still operate. Others, like number two up there, is currently the Nutley Museum, was actually still on our rolls as a not-operating school until the mid-'80s, when we officially handed it over to them. So, wanna take a look at it? And links are on my website, or the Redundant Schools Network. It has over 1,000 meetings dating back to the early 1900s. 150 meeting videos, everything back to October 2009, I'll be flipping it up. 50,000 pages of documents. It's a lot of pages. Yes, I have proofreading. If you see anything that I missed, when you're going through them, let me know. It's entirely possible I missed something, all of it. If you happen to have anything else lying around home, we have a copy of one of the old budget books that we sent out for when they were actually voted on, they're old school photos. Especially if you have anything from those time periods that aren't currently up on site. 1874 is when this district started, in Franklin Township, Burkeaway former, the time Belfold. All of our records officially start in 1874. That's when we date our high school commencements for, 1874, before Nutley officially existed. And if you have any of these, you have any questions about it, spot anything missing, or you find anything that you would like added to, archives at Nuthley Schools Network, let me know, please.
And where you do the yearbooks too, if you want?
Yeah, there's other things to be added to this as we go forward.
Not the yearbooks.
I like to see a lot of these pictures of the yearbooks.
Copies of all the commencement exercises. You know, we've used, except for one year I've found so far, exactly the same cover for the commencement exercises that we use today, we were using many, many decades ago. I don't know what was up in 1977, but 1977... I don't know what was up in 1977, but 1977 used a bright pink, different design for the cover. All of those are the same as they look like today. Go take a look at it.
Thank you so much, Ian. I know that it's truly been an incredible amount of work and a labor of love for you. Every time he'd come up with something new and interesting and different, or a new picture out of the basement, it was so much fun to see and hear the story. Truly are our institutional memory at this point. Thank you for all the effort.
Alright, so anybody now that would like to leave? Because I know the next part is very interesting, unless you want to hear our super speech, you always have some good talk.
I was gonna say, really?
She really does have some good talk. The next opportunity, the next opportunity to have to leave is gonna be after 16:00.
I'll be now, I'm gonna start talking.
You got 10 seconds. Alright, so we're gonna continue our meeting now, and we're gonna turn it over to Dr. Julie Glazer for her superintendent's report.
Hi, everybody. First of all, let me congratulate our incumbents, Mrs. Dancheck Martin, Mr. Sal Ferrero, Mr. Fred Scalarra, on being re-elected for another term on this school board. We're all, with their decision-making, thoughtful planning, and commitment to the students and town, and Nutley was recognized and valued by the voters of this community. Truly, congratulations. And more congratulations. I'd like to congratulate my colleague Superintendent Richard Tomco, and our neighbors from Belleville and in Belleville, and I guess you too, Mr. Tomco, who voted to pass their town's $49.5 million referendum during the November 7th election. If you haven't heard it enough, our issues of overcrowding, safety, academic rigor are not unique to Nutley, obviously. And I'm hopeful that our voters also recognize that the time is now to address our urgent needs as well. And I hope that our voters also make their commitment to this town going by going to the polls on December 12th. An important note, the county board of elections did mistakenly advertise our polling locations as being in Glen Ridge. If you're a registered voter, please look for a postcard in the mail from the county elections office listing the correct polling places. Our polls will be open from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. on December 12th. If you have any questions at all regarding the referendum, please address them to me, to the Director of Communications Karen Greco, one of our Board of Education members, and please go through the district website or district social media. That's where you're gonna find the most accurate information. We do not respond to questions or comments posted on any other sites. But, you don't have to hesitate at all. If you see one of us down the street in an event, which is pretty much 10 times a day, please reach out to us. We would love to talk to you. We're happy to answer your questions and make sure you get the most accurate information about what's coming December 12th and beyond. Since our last board meeting, since we were last here, I had the privilege of being one of only 70 superintendents in the nation to be invited to attend the District Administration Leadership Summit. It was wonderful professional learning for me, and I've been bringing back great information for our extended day programming, preparing for our upcoming strategic planning process, and for our continuing integration of technology. The only downside was that I missed the Patriots Club Veterans Day recognition honoring the duty of many of our men and women here in Nutley. So, to all of you who I missed, truly thank you for your service. And a big thank you to the Nutley Family Service Bureau for organizing the second annual dinner honoring our service members and their families. I was able to attend the ball play at the high school, the crucible, and I have to say, I wish the kids were still here. But what an outstanding job the students and staff did. It's a really tough play, and everyone that was involved made it engaging and relevant. So, wait for a nice Saturday night after week. I was also able to attend yesterday the Nutley Hall of Fame celebration along with our board member Fred Scalarra. It was a wonderful afternoon, and I was so impressed by all of our talent in town. I have to give special congratulations to our colleague Commissioner Tom Evans. I think we are all just thrilled to be able to honor your efforts. And I want to thank Chris O'Sajar, our own Chris O'Sajar, who made sure I had a ticket so that I was able to go. Very important. Just a reminder, the district is closed this Thursday and Friday, November 23rd and 24th, to allow our staff and students the opportunity to celebrate the Thanksgiving holiday with family and friends. And I would like to take this opportunity to wish each of you a relaxing long weekend, full of love. Have happiness in the new year. I, for one, will be counting my blessings, and I am so very grateful to be a part of this wonderful community. Thank you.
We're gonna move it over to our Board Secretary, Mrs. Karen Ayers.
Thank you, Mr. Carnesella. Firstly, I'd like to report on the status of the Washington School Security Entrance Project. It is moving on schedule. We have already planned out bi-weekly construction meetings that take place at the site with the building principal, representatives from the architect, contractors, myself, Mr. Nemora, Mr. Nicolet, Dr. Glazer, to get updates on the project on a regular basis. Firstly, I'd like to extend appreciation to all of the staff at Washington School. They have been doing a fabulous job in working under not the most conducive conditions for the past week and a half. There's been a lot of jackhammering going on during the demolition phase of the project. But they are so cooperative, and they are really doing a great job. And we appreciate their acknowledgement of what needs to be done, because they're all excited about what's gonna be happening to their building. The plan is to begin installing the footings next Monday, and hopefully the jackhammering will be finished. We started to address snow removal and heating in the buildings in anticipation of what may be coming. If this morning is any evidence, hopefully it'll be just tiny little flurries, but we don't know what's gonna happen for the winter. So, we've started to, the grounds crew has identified equipment that needs to be replaced or upgraded. We have, anything that needs to be repaired is being currently done, and the maintenance staff is doing preventative maintenance on our heating systems and trying to address any issues that, as they come up immediately, to get things rectified. Our June 30th, 2017 audit has been completed. Business Office staff, Mr. Nemora, Dr. Glazer, and our executive auditors today for our NSIC conference. They will be presenting to the Finance Committee at our next meeting, and then a public presentation on the audit will take place at the December 18th board meeting. We are also well underway with our new zero-based budgeting preparation. Principals and directors have all received their budget submission forms, and coordinators will be distributed this week. Central Office will be meeting with each administrator sometime in December to review their budget submission requests so that we can start working on a final product.
Thank you, Mrs. Ayers. Okay, we have our student representative, Mr. Sal. It's all you. Take it away for us.
Good evening, everyone. This past Sunday, yesterday, November 19th, the Power Pub was held at the Oval by the Nutley High School. The Student Council raised donations from Melissa and Centella Foundation, and we raised awareness for dystonia. I just want to express my gratitude for all those who have come and supported the Power Pub yesterday. A lot of people came, and a lot of students participated. Even though yesterday was windy and freezing, it was freezing. Realize, I was the first one. It was freezing. I can barely feel my hands. But even so, everyone's morale and enthusiasm have not decreased a bit. And the next thing, although the date has not been decided on yet, the decathlon will take place sometime in December or January. And the share orders for decathlon are still being processed. And at last, we have the holiday toy drive coming on December 21st. We're continuing our tradition of delivering toys to those in need. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, so we're moving on to our committee reports. We're gonna start off with our academic report by Mr. Balsama.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just by the way, real quick, Melissa and Centella was a very dear friend of mine since the second grade, so thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Yeah, yes, Mr. President. The academic committee met on November 15th at 6 o'clock. Mr. Banian, Mr. Materio, and Mr. Roy had reviewed the draft proposal program studies for the high school. It included changes to the AP courses, testing, option two, and midterms. Beginning with the 2018 school year, students who enroll in an AP class will be required to take the AP exam. Payment for the exam must be made by the second week in September. Option two was modified to include the variety of independent study opportunities now available in the district. We will no longer, we will no longer be doing midterm testing. District benchmark and performance assessments will replace midterms. Each of these items will be reviewed and detailed for students and parents during freshman orientation this winter and during the scheduling process. Mrs. Locuncello reviewed the November 7th full-day professional learning and provided feedback from staff on the day. It was, it was all very positive. Special thanks to our staff who presented the more than 50 sessions. Dr. Glazer detailed the work the administrative leadership team has done, with Dr. Librera, who is once again working with the district to develop a five-year strategic plan. Convening of stakeholders and community survey will begin in the new year. Dr. Glazer also shared that proposed revised job description for the Coordinator of Integrated Instructional Technology. This position has been reposted and interviews are being scheduled. Mr. Banian and Mrs. Locuncello detailed requests for proposal for an external evaluator for the upcoming math program review. The committee had a general discussion about communication dissemination for the upcoming referendum. Additionally, the committee also had a general discussion regarding the ongoing facilities projects at Nutley High School, Lincoln School, and Washington School. Mr. Banian reviewed field trip and professional development requests, and finally, Dr. Glazer reviewed personnel and legal updates. The next meeting of the academic committee will be Wednesday, December 13th at 6:00 p.m.
Thank you, Mr. Balsama. I'll move over to Administration. Mr. Scalarra, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Administrative Committee met on November 13th. Mr. Kazinsky reviewed the status and the ongoing negotiation with the administrative unit. Dr. Glazer reviewed the status of the technology position and reviewed a job description and process for hiring the coordinator rather than a director of integrated instructional technology. The committee discussed the referendum activities and the communications that will be ongoing with the community, and Dr. Glazer also reviewed several legal and personnel items. The next meeting will be Monday, December 11th at 11:00.
Thank you, Mrs. Scalarra. And we're gonna move on over to Mr. Klein, Finance.
Mr. President, Finance Committee met on November 14th. Mr. Nicolet provided updates on several projects, the high school classroom door locks, the Lincoln School front steps, the high school secure entrance, which has been completed, and then Washington School entrance, which has just started. The committee reviewed the options for addressing the cram on the middle school facade and the need to prepare a bid for advertisement. Mr. Nicolet reviewed the condition of several vehicles and grounds equipment that are aging and prioritize the replacement through upcoming budget cycles. We also discussed the preparation being made for the winter at Snowboard. We discussed the upcoming, potential upcoming summer projects and the timeline for how we're gonna review all of those for this upcoming summer. Not that the winter has started yet, but we're already talking about summer. November 20th, the agenda items that are, will be on the agenda tonight were discussed, as well as the hockey co-op and extended day financial report.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. And we're gonna wrap this up with a few words from Ms. Sherman on policy.
The Policy Committee met on November 15th, in attendance companionage, Janine Locuncello, Dr. Glazer, and Lisa Dancheck Martin. We reviewed policies proposed for adoption on tonight's agenda. We tabled a few policies for further review and discussion with administrators, and we discussed our next section of policies to be reviewed at our next meeting, which will be December 13th.
Thank you, Ms. Sherman. Okay, we now come to the portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. In this section, we allow questions or comments on only the resolutions addressed in tonight's agenda. Board Resolution 601 allows 20 minutes for these communications. Each person shall be limited to three minutes, as we ask you to try to stay within the requirement. Speakers may speak more than once, only after others wishing to speak on a topic have been heard. All statements will be directed to me as the chairperson, and no one may address the board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to always state your name and address each and every time you address the board and sign with Miss Kuzo before you take the microphone. Will the first person being wishing to be heard, please step forward? Okay, seeing none? Mr. Balsama, would you take academic resolutions, please?
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to move to academic resolution 1 through 3 as listed.
Discussion? Roll call, Miss Kuzo.
Mr. Balsama?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Scalarra?
Yes.
Ms. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Carnesella?
Yes. Mr. Scalarra, would you take Administration, please?
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to move to Administration, Resolutions 1 through 5, as listed.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, Miss Kuzo.
Mr. Balsama?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Scalarra?
Yes.
Ms. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Carnesella?
Yes. Mr. Ferrara, would you take Finance, please?
Yes, Mr. President. I would be commotion to the Finance Resolutions 1 through 11 as listed.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, Miss Kuzo.
Mr. Balsama?
Yes, on Resolutions 1 and 2, staying Resolution 3, 4 through 11, yes.
Mrs. Dancheck Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Scalarra?
Yes.
Ms. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Carnesella?
Yes. Vice President Russo, would you take Personnel, please?
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to move to Personal Resolution Number 1 as listed. I still move. Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Balsama?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Scalarra?
Yes.
Ms. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Carnesella?
Yes. Alright, in this section, we allow questions or comments on all school-related matters. Our regulation allows for 30 minutes for this communication. Again, each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within the requirement. As I stated earlier, all statements will be directed to me as the chairperson, and no one may address the board individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to always state your name and address each and every time you address the board and sign with Miss Kuzo before you take the microphone. Will the first person wishing to be heard, please step forward? Okay, seeing none? Any old business to come before the board? Any new business to come before the board?
Questions, comments, thoughts?
Sure.
As the superintendent talked about, our Nutley Hall of Fame committee, and I meant to bring the book tonight, but I just have to state that these are all people that graduated from Nutley High School, lived here more than 10 years. Oh, and a Navy SEAL, actually, I learned to graduate with Mr. Balsama over here, a friend of his. But a Navy SEAL who actually now has a, does thing with children, marrying up with children with cancer, marries them up with Navy SEALs for training, and he also runs a successful... And he also runs a successful business, saving lives of public safety officials nationwide on telling how to do things. From another person, I wish I had the names, she graduated from Nutley High. She actually works on Steven Spielberg productions. And she will actually, her new movie coming out in December. And she worked on the last one with people such as Tom Hanks and others, really great from Nutley. An opera singer who graduated, and actually, Nutley High School in the 90s also. Glad to show us a video of his presentation from Europe, and his sister, who still lives in Nutley, spoke for him. But what a beautiful operatic voice. To Commissioner Evans, who is a world-known person for Price Water, Cooper House Worldwide, a commissioner here in town. See, these are all people that graduated and lived in this town. We should be proud of that. Think of where you are today, and where people not too far ago, too many years ago, graduated, and what they're doing around the world. So I just wanted to recognize some of them. In the future, I'll bring the names with me. I meant to bring the books, so I apologize. But I just thought we ought to recognize that. I'd love to have somebody like the opera singer come back to work for the choir in Nutley.
That was amazing.
Right, was it amazing? Come back. I didn't want to say, because if I started with a name, I was gonna.
You didn't know any other?
But that's right, Lenny Ball, but coming back to do something for there. The one that's doing, do set designs for the theaters, to come back and talk to our.
She has a new film coming out, December 22nd, called The Post, about the Pentagon.
With Tom Hanks and all of it.
She was nominated for an Academy Award for reading the files.
Correct, that's a better record. But if we can get her to come back one day and do it for our students. But those are the things that we should be doing, and successes that are out of our school system that I think are very grand. So I just wanted to recommend that.
Thank you, Mrs. Scolera. All right, so whereas the Board of Education will be discussing matters exempt from public discussion pursuant to NJSA 10-4 that 12, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education reassess the proposed executive session and it's time to discuss certain matters, personnel, property acquisition. Be further resolved that the results of the discussion will be made public by inclusion on the agenda of a subsequent meeting of the Board of Education. Everyone agrees for discussion of such matters, and those sessions no longer exist.
Second.
We don't retain.
And before we all go in favor of that one. I just want everyone to know that if we're probably gonna be in close, I'm gonna say probably about twenty minutes. But the goal is, is that we're gonna come back into open, and we're gonna have a brief discussion about the referendum. So if anybody wants to remain, they are more than welcome. But we're gonna probably be about twenty minutes to a half hour. And then we'll be back in public to finish out the meeting. And no formal action will be taken. All in favor?
Come to see, buddy.
Like zombie.
Yes, showtime. All right, this is Ains, will you take a roll of balls, please?
Mr. Balsama?
Here.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Here.
Ms. Russo?
Here.
Mr. Klein?
Here.
Mr. Ferrera?
Here.
Mr. Scolera?
Here.
Ms. Sherman?
Here.
Mr. Carnesella?
Here.
Okay, so we won't keep you much longer, I promise. We're gonna have a presentation from Ms. Greco.
Or at least a comment. At least a comment.
This is the 8:45 presentation.
So we are moving forward with the referendum. We have a new banner on our Facebook page that says, "The referendum reader reminds you to vote on Tuesday, December 12th." Anyone interested in receiving that can email me directly. In the next couple of weeks, we will have lawn signs available, postcards available, other sorts of material for handouts. Again, everyone can reach out to me. I know there were a number of people who signed up to be part of committee lists, and this is when we'll be really asking for your help in terms of distributing materials to the community. Again, I'm your point person, so if anyone has questions, call or email me directly. And we will be looking for long tiers for phone chains as well. So again, I'm your point person, email or phone, kagreco@nutleyhighschool.com, 661-8818.
Any other questions from the board? Anything from our fellows here?
Have a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Have a wonderful Thanksgiving. And, wait, I'm sorry. We need a motion.
Motion to close.
Okay. Yeah, we don't have to go back to the close, right?
Motion to adjourn.
Most of the.
Motion.
Aye.
All of you? Aye. All right.
Thank you very much, Dan, for all of your presentation.